I'm gonna open a public hearing to consider the petition for a variance from Brian Thompson of twenty-four Shore Drive. Need the variance for a minimum rear yard setback to construct a single-family home. On parcels identified, assesses map four dash eleven parcels thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty on Shore Drive. State my case?
State your case, show us some plans if you have them.
I don't have any house plans, but I've got my plans that are for that lot with all the septic and everything and setbacks. Which is, you know, if you guys just wanna pass that around, like you said, this is it right here, guys. And this is the lot thirty- thirty-seven through forty. Septic design is forward here, which has all been approved. Uh, house is going in here, that's my setback I need right here. This is all kind of landlocked land back here. I think Mark, you might have a little spot right back here in the corner. One little, right there, I think that's where Mark butts against us there. But again, that's all wooded area. Uh, that's my, uh, what's his name, lives over behind AJ? Barrows out back here. So, most of this is all against, against Barrows on the back. And like I said, so, but this has all been, everything here's all been approved. The only thing that we have to do is just get the setback for, for the house up here. And like I said, this, and I can show you that plot lamp. I'll show you just exactly where that's going, just show you what's behind it, it'll give you a better idea. Uh, let me see, six, seven, okay, so you got thirty-seven through forty. And then you've got, uh, first, First Street here. That house is going in right up in here. So, like I said, this is all, all wooded area, this is all wooded area here, so we're not in anybody's backyard or...
So, the house is going on lot thirty-nine?
Uh, going on, yeah, yeah.
Thirty-nine and thirty-eight?
Yeah, well, right along that back line on thirty.
You own thirty-eight?
I own all four, yeah, thirty, uh, thirty-seven through forty.
So, you're gonna make that all one lot?
That's all gonna be one lot, yeah.
And who, you own this, you don't?
No, I don't own that, I think that's my, uh, Barrows that lives over here. And like I said, Mark's got that little...
I'm over here.
You got that little cut, I think, right, that's where you're only, you're button, buttoning up against me, that little spot right there.
Okay, so you're like...
Yeah. So, but like I said, this is all wooded, wooded area, this is all landlocked, so nothing's ever gonna go in.
Yeah, so this is Barrows, you're, you're coming up within ten feet of...
Yeah.
That's what you're proposing, within ten feet of his property line right there. And a septic would be on...
A septic is, is over on forty, yeah, and that's all been, that was all been approved.
When was, when was that approved?
That was approved back in two thousand nine, I think. And then I had an extension done on it, and I just had another extension done on all the terms. Terms of conditions, I just had an extension done all, all on that, um... When I did that, in June, so I've got my, all my terms of conditions, but all get an extension on, so that's all good.
That's from the DEP?
Yeah, yeah. And that, that just has to be brought in and be, be updated, but other than that, it's all...
So, how close are you to the boundary then?
Uh, it's, we're trying to get within ten feet.
Ten feet?
Yeah.
And this is what?
That's, that's, that's the back of the, I think that's gonna be the back of the house there.
It's the house.
And then they're saying if you wanna put, they put a deck on the back or something like that, you know what I mean?
What's with that being closer?
Yeah, you, you know, ten feet, that's the deck or whatever you put back there.
Right, right.
If we give you a variance for ten feet, you can't put a deck on the back.
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think she just kinda drew that on, just to say if, you know, but that, that's what we need.
How much acreage is there, all the lots combined?
Uh, maybe a little over an acre. Yeah, it's not, you know, the problem with all these lots is you can see...
Yeah, they're all small.
They're all small, so...
You can fit a septic in a, in a house on it.
Unless you have, unless you have two or three lots, you're, you're not gonna, you can't do anything.
Where's the well going?
I've, I don't know, I think the wells going over on this, I think the wells are going right here.
No, that's a benchmark.
Oh, is it? I don't, I don't, like I said, it's not something, I didn't, uh...
This is wetlands through here, is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, yeah. And that's why everything's, you know, th- th- why, where, it was kinda tough to work with, you know, because we had this here, we had to replicate some stuff over here.
Well, it's right in the middle here.
So, your sewer line's gonna go through the wetland?
Uh...
Yeah, gonna through that culvert cuts across.
Yeah. Yeah, Mark, Mark would know more about, know more about that.
Yeah, the water goes here, cuts across.
Yeah, Mark would probably know more about that, neither.
Yes, it's all, this is all wetlands, right?
Yeah.
This is the backside of, say, Patrickville Road's over here, all the water on the backside of the houses, all comes out through and it goes into Patrickville Pond.
Mm-hmm.
That's all, that's the lowest spot all the way right through here.
I can't, I can't find the well either, but it should be there somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, a hundred feet is probably right even.
Well, there's a hundred foot from this person's well over here.
Yeah.
Oh, he does, on the other side of First Street?
Inches, twenty feet, so five inches.
And we have another, we have another well over here now.
Oh, yeah.
There's another house here, there's another well here. Where's the other one, you know, that's your, oh, who's that, that's, yours?
Uh, that would be across from...
But it's been designed and approved, so they must have checked this out.
Well, yeah, well, I know that one went in after that, but I'm saying, oh, they're all, is that, is that your neighbors, the one in the hole? Right, 'cause that'd be the water, is that be their artesian well, right?
It might be, yeah.
That's their well.
Because we're up in here, so, uh, I'm on five and six. And you're up in here, so that would be, my well would be there, that might be across the street.
No, no, you're, you're, same side as you.
Okay, so that's me, that, that would be mine.
That's yours.
I'm the only one that would be over in that area.
And the other person, their well is, yeah, it's, it's, it's still...
Yeah. But like I said, everything as far as, everything like, everything was, was all, was approved, you know, and I just kept, of course, when I had that down, it was in like oh-seven, so I certainly wasn't gonna build a house in oh-seven.
Yeah, good times.
You know?
No?
But you never got a variance, all throughout the whole... No, 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 no.
Yeah, you said that. So, you got their approval?
Hey, I guess my phone gone.
Where's, no, no, no.
See, mine, mine makes funny sounds, but that one wasn't familiar.
No, 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 I just, that's the, that's who stamped, that's who stamped it as in, Sanitar who drew it.
Oh, I, well, 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 I've, I've got a, I've got a stamp plan, it's not, if not, they haven't.
No, stamp, no, I mean, the Board of Health signing saying it's been approved.
Right, 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 and I've got the, I got all the documentation on it, so, it's definitely, it's just been all approved, believe me, I went through enough meetings.
Well, I just, I just wanted, you know, I just, you know...
No, no, I mean, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't come in here, but...
Well, I didn't know where it was, I just wondered where it was gonna be.
I just, I had like, I've got like five or six of these, so it's, but every, yeah, the, the subject design's all been approved. I went, I went to six meetings to get it approved, so, I don't, I think you were in the office when, you weren't, you weren't...
No, not in that capacity, right.
Yeah, you weren't running, uh...
Had to be Phil then, Phil led you?
No, it was, uh, what's her name?
Joyce.
Oh, Joyce.
But, you have that plan?
I'll have to search for it.
So, that's the other day.
Oh, you mean the old, um, Board of Health agent?
And how, how long are those plans good for?
Actually, they don't expire, so to speak, but they do have to be updated with anything from...
And so, what I, I would, I would, I would bring them back to Northland Engineers, and any, anything that had changed in that, you know, I'd, I would just make up a new set of plans, if that's what it is. Just to add, if there was any new regulations that, that came on through the, you know, through the plan.
And any, your neighbors, if their wells, you know, if your neighbor put a well in somewhere or...
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's another new house in Florida, so they're gonna go away.
Yeah, yeah, but we're gonna be, I'm almost sure that well is gonna be on the other side of the house, so that's gonna be well away from, from anything.
Yeah, I, I just, just, I know they do that, you know, just make sure that, that new house they put right on the corner there, yes, right near the beach area, their, their well is in there. Or whatever.
Yeah.
That, you know, the septic, that's not our department anyways, but, um, what are, what are the dimensions of the proposed building?
Uh, it's gonna be, just a small, two-bedroom, uh, two-bedroom, two-back.
Yeah, well, we, we need a variance, we're gonna grant you variance, you know, we need...
All right, yeah.
We can't, we're not gonna give you a variance to build a two-bedroom house and you put it anywhere you want.
Yeah.
You give us the dimensions, we'll tell you how far away from what you're gonna be and...
Okay, all right.
And, so, you know, so you kinda need, we kinda need to know what...
Yeah, well, like I said, the...
What you're gonna be doing there.
The, the size of the house is virtually on that, on this plan.
Does, I'd have more dimensions on this plan, there's, there's no dimen, I, I can't, I can't see anything.
No, 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 I, I, yeah, I mean, this type of house that was gonna fit, so that's, yeah.
Uh, you know, I, I, we don't have a lot of information, we've got a lot of information on this plan, but no dimensions, nothing that pertains to the Board of Appeals, really.
Okay, all right.
You know, we need to know the size of the house.
Like I said, this is all new to me, so...
Location and size of the house.
What you have there, does it show the size of the house, what you have?
Yeah.
See if we can line it up, what we got.
It doesn't, it doesn't have the, uh...
The exact square.
It doesn't have the exact square footage, I mean, it's, you can see that they outlined the house right here.
Yeah, but usually it'll say like if it's eighty by forty or something, then it's...
And I can have, I can have all that, you know, when I, when I come in, I'll have, I'll have a draw all that up and...
And you been at conservation already, or?
Oh, yeah, I've got my terms of conditions right there, yeah.
Yeah. They're, they're going fifteen feet from the wetlands to the border of the building?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's all been approved, yeah.
Do you have stakes on the property where it's going, so, uh, you, no, nothing, okay?
Do I have to raise my hand, or do I can just speak?
Well, how we usually do it, Mark, is the applicant says his spiel, the board asks questions, and then we'll open it up to the, open it up to the public. Keeps it somewhat organized.
I know, I, I have meetings too.
I don't even bring my hammer anymore. I used to have a hammer.
I've only seen you bang that twice in, uh, over twenty-five years I've been on this board, and the other one was about, was this year. Yeah, you leave that at home.
Right, too, the one from Baltimore.
Oh, yeah.
Happens.
So, you're, you're meeting all your side setbacks, so what we're, what we're considering is only the rear.
The rear setback.
The rear, yeah.
The rear setback.
You're looking for somewhere in there twenty feet. You, you got ten, you get ten away from it, so you need twenty.
Yeah, it's a thirty, you're supposed to be thirty feet away.
Yeah.
So, if you're ten feet in from the back...
Right.
The house is gonna be forty feet, thirty feet?
You mean the size of the house?
From the, from the back towards the front.
I, I would think about that, yeah.
What does that give you in the front?
Oh, that, we got plenty of room in the front.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, there's no, that, that's not an issue at all.
Just you wanna shove it back as far as you can?
We have to put it back, because we have some wet areas in the front. That's gonna be basically, we gotta take some, it has to be replicated over and another, it's all in the, uh, conservation plan, yeah.
Is this your well, what's this forty feet?
It looks like from the wetland to this octagon-looking thing.
Drywall, I thought you said, or...
I see a drywall. Storm?
Look at, look at your plan, read a bit of it.
Is that a...
No plans this far? Couple weeks in, November and...
Is this one here?
Proposed ten-foot minimum, stockpile. I mean, Mark would know more. Take a look, Mark?
Are you looking at?
Is Mark forty feet from the wetland boundary?
Yep.
And, so, I'm not sure if this is ten feet from that, or is it ten feet from your building? What, what is the ten feet?
I know we have this thing here, it's a drain here, I don't know if it must be a cellar drain. So, I mean, it's this drain right here, and they got stone here to, to that, but I don't know... Forty feet. Is it another? I wonder if it's, I wonder if, no, I wonder if it's the backwash thing, for the well.
All backwash, drywall?
Like a drywall, do you know what I mean? Oh, it's ten foot, that's from the, from where though? The whole building? No, okay, that's twenty.
But, but see, yeah, yeah, I wanna, we're gonna, it looks like you, the building, you, you don't need, you could have fifteen feet to here. You know, it looks like the ten-foot is...
To there.
Well, actually, it doesn't say, you know.
Proposed ten-foot minimum.
Proposed ten-foot minimum, and you put it through.
So, you got fifteen from the wetlands to here.
Yeah, see, that fifteen feet looks...
About the same as...
About the same as... In fact, the ten comes up to this octagon.
I don't know what that thing is.
To see if there was some... Got all the symbols here, but I don't see...
Drive by profile, this shows just the ridges, tank, D-barks, seals, trash detail, moments, well, just the way else. Yeah, yeah, no idea what that...
So, so, we, so you guys, you guys, we, what we need is, is, is some type of dimensions on the house, with exactly what that's gonna be.
Yeah, and then what we'll be looking at is, you know, could you, could you build, could, you know, if, if you've got fifteen feet, and this proposed, well, I mean, you know, maybe you, you could shorten the house
Could we, could we go up, yeah.
six feet and get twenty-one feet out of it, or, you know? But we're concerned with, you know, you gotta get a ladder up on the side of the house, you've gotta build staging, and get behind the staging. You start getting under ten feet, it's tight. And how, how high the building's gonna be? Where you're ten feet close, you know, you gotta have thirty-foot ladder, or sixty-feet ladder, or...
Yeah, singles, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it's gonna be a single story, yeah, we don't know.
We, we have no idea. We, we could grant your variance if, if it was voted and granted a variance. You know, you gotta keep it twenty feet tall, max.
Yeah, well, like you said, it's gonna, it's gonna...
You know?
Yeah, you're not gonna put anything out there, I'm not gonna put anything out there.
But we don't wanna put a twenty if you're planning on twenty-two, you know?
Right, right.
So, it, it's nice to know what you want, and then make that where, where areas of our concern, you can address, you know, how do you think about downsizing this, or doing this, or squeezing this, or... You know, you got, you got something to negotiate.
It should show, it should show the overhang on the roof, too, because you can go by that as well.
Yeah, the overhang of the roof is...
Because usually it's over a little bit when it got up.
Yeah, well, see, I didn't have, I, I didn't actually have any plans done yet, because I didn't wanna, I'm not gonna start paying money, have plans until I got, you know, until I know that it's, it's gonna work, you know, it's a couple thousand, I got four, five thousand dollars in plans already, I, you know, just, so I just... So, I'm gonna actually do a house plan, because I, I, I know that's what she said was gonna fit in there, so that's what I was going here.
Doesn't fit, it doesn't...
Well, no, 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 I'm not...
So, it doesn't fit?
No, I know it doesn't fit, but it's what I'm here for.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of these, a lot of these small lots, one way or another, you're...
That's the best thing she can, I wonder if she's gonna stay at the house.
You almost need a variance on, on some of these small lots, one way, you, you got a lot that's only seventy-five feet, and you got thirty, on the front, thirty on the back.
Yeah.
It's pretty tough to build a house down there if you don't have a variance. You know what I mean?
We don't, we don't grant a lot of variances.
No, no, I'm just saying, you know, on these, on these little cookie cutter lots that you're, we're dealing with, down on Pine Shore Drive, if you don't get a variance, it's, it's gonna be tough to put hoses in on it, you know, you got a seventy-five-foot deep lot. You don't get a variance on the, the front or the back, or something like that, it's gonna be pretty tough to put a house in there.
And your water and sewer, they're gonna be so far.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, you know, yeah, yeah, it's almost, you know, those lots were cut up before, you know, before all these setbacks were...
When they were outhouses.
Right, yeah, you know, as, as like I said...
They're basically camps back in the day, I think.
Yeah, that's what it was, it was a camp.
I mean, if you don't, lobbies, if you don't get a variance, you, you won't be able to put anything in there, you know? So, it's, because like I said, if you...
Any other questions?
Like I said, if you look at these little, at these little cookie cut, you know, everything was so, was...
We've had other people come through, not just you.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, a few, not, not a lot.
Two, two since I've been here, one when I first came, all the way down at the end on the right, and somebody, I forget what, whether it was Sixth Street or Fifth, he had some lots in the back.
Because again, like, see, you've got a hundred, a hundred feet, well, a hundred feet from a well, or a, or a, or your septic and your setbacks, you, you're gonna have a hard time putting a house in there.
You either have two lots, or you can't do it.
Yeah, yeah. And, well, the, the problem is, there is not, that, the, the length of the lot as much as it is the, the depth, that, that, that's where you're getting, because you've gotta have thirty feet in the front, thirty feet in the back, a hundred-foot lot.
It's not gonna...
You're not gonna do, you know, without a variance, you, you can, you can't do anything down there, you know, so... But, uh...
Well, I, I think if he's, if you give him a, a barrier across the back of ten feet, whatever he wants to put in, he needs the front and the sides.
We usually see something, though, that he's building, that's what we don't have.
Yeah, you know, we, we don't know how tall it's gonna be, you know, it's, we, we could put limits on the height, limits on, on the size of it, you know? And, you know, the overhang, the faun, it's not the foundation, it's the overhang of the roof or a deck, or stairs coming off a deck, or, that, that's what's gonna be ten feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right. Well, you, well, yeah, like I said, I don't think you're gonna be seeing a deck back there, because you worry, we, we just don't have the room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These steps coming off, you know, do patio, patio's fine, whatever, but, you know, that, that's what'd be nice to see.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Uh, Mark, you got something you wanna say?
Couple things, I mean, there's a bit, enough land there to put a house, but the big issue is all the wetlands. You know, that's, a lot of it's unbuildable, and that's why, nothing's ever been in there all those years, because it's unbuildable, because all the wetlands, what you see on there, on the plan. How many, I mean, this is new land, we wanna call it virgin land, nothing's ever been built on it, don't we have the rules, are just setbacks are setbacks, and that's it, on new land?
New land?
Yeah, well, it's new land, it's virgin land, it's not like an existing, houses there, it's like we did on, uh, you, you did on Volvo Road for the house separate, on the corner with that cottage or whatever. You allow, you know, a couple of feet here, you know, I mean, it's real, real, that doesn't mean any setbacks, so that helps.
No, we, we granted, we granted others, that didn't have road frontage, never built on them before.
But it was existing, yeah, you did. Yeah. Yeah, but I'm talking about the setbacks. I mean, you, let me see, nothing per, nothing personal, but I'm just, now, I'm talking as, as a commissioner on a sewer, you set a precedent, you go up a can of worms, and a lot of people wanna jam back ten feet.
But the whole problem is, over, over there, Mark, you're not gonna be able to, like I said, you're not gonna be able to put anything down in there.
Then don't put anything there.
Well, then, 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 you know, the, the people, people on land down there...
That's why nothing was built, that's why nothing was built there, because of the wetlands, and you can't put a house in there.
There, that's not the reason, you, you got, you got lots and lots and lots down there, nobody built on it.
Which, which don't have wetlands.
No, eight, no, no.
Yeah, yeah, which, which don't, which don't have the wetlands, if you didn't have the wetlands, there's plenty of room to do, but you could build a house.
Eight, no, Mark's got the floor.
You could bring it twenty feet, twenty-five, thirty feet off the back, if you didn't have the wetland issues. You're jamming it in at one spot, and you go, septic system one, you got four lots, and all you can just barely put what you can put in there, if you get variances.
Variance.
It's, it's, it's nothing personal, but it's just that setting a precedent that you're, I, I have no problem putting a house in there, but go by the rules of the setbacks. It's, it's virg, it's a virgin land, you know, to recall it, no house that's ever been there before, and if it can't go there, why don't you put, move your house a hundred feet further down the road? You can't, because it's all wetlands, can't go up, can't go down, you can't put, you know, there's no room to put anything in there.
Right, I'll give you a minute.
So, ask for variances to put something in there that you can't put in there, just, just so you can get a variance, you can get a variance for septic systems all over the place, where you never can put a system in. But you can't, because it's new land, and you have rules, the rules are new systems, you gotta be so far away from the well, so far away from the boundaries, you can't get variances on new systems. Correct, Mark? Right, there's no vari, you put a new system in, there's no variances on new land, repairs, you can do it, the same thing here, you're putting a new house, a new process, or, new land, I say new land, but it's new land. If it can't fit, it can't fit. There's a lot of land that they don't put septic, can't build houses on, because you can't meet the setbacks for the septic system. You can get a perk, but you can't meet the setbacks. And you just can't do it, it's abnormal. So, I mean, that's what, I mean, if you set a precedent, you gotta set a precedent, then you're gonna, you know, it's gonna happen, I mean, I mean, me on the sewer board, it's tough that you like to grant, you know, a variance, or grant some sort of abatement or something, but you can't, because then it just sets a precedent, and I don't think you should set a precedent of trying to... An existing home, yes, new home, I don't think you should.
Who's to say this board wouldn't be in favor of setting, setting that precedence and getting Templeton more developed? If it works, it works, if it's a hazard, it's a hazard.
Then I would say change your bylaws to say ten-foot setback. But right now, you have a thirty-foot setback off the, off the back, or fifteen off the side, thirty off the front?
But, but, but you're, you're going, you're going down a whole different block, I'm not looking for a variance.
Let, let Mark finish it then.
Yeah, no, I, I, I mean, you are asking for, he is asking for a variance, to put something in that doesn't meet your rules or regu, the town's building rules and regulations, if it met the town's building rules and regulations, you wouldn't be here at the variance board.
Are you done?
Yes, I'm done now.
For one thing...
Right.
I'm, I'm not looking for a variance on this septic system, because no, there's no, 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 this is what you're, you kept on, well, that you, if you set a precedent on this septic sys, the, the septic system meets all of...
I didn't say the septic system.
Yes, you did, you said, you said it.
No, Mark, you get the floor.
You said it five times. You said, you set a precedent on this septic system, the, and I'll tell ya...
But he, he mentioned also...
Well, no, but I understand, but that, but that seemed, oh, I, well, no, no.
He said he, they don't give them on variance.
And the whole thing about it was, he's, oh, I'm on the septic board, I'm on the, I'm on the septic, we're septic, we're septic, well, I don't...
We're not here, we're not here for the septic, we're here for the ten-foot setback.
But that, but that, that's his, that, that's his strong argument here. And the whole thing about it is, is like I said, you take, you know, a, anywhere down there, I built a garage down across the street in two thousand thirteen, and it was the same, I had to, I had to go get a variance. I didn't see you over there, Mark, arguing about my variance for my garage. Was there, was there no precedent?
Never get, never get notification of it.
Yeah, get him to the board, get him to the board, Mark.
No, but what I'm saying is, I, you're, you can't build down there, I'm sure the new house down in the corner had to get a variance, they, they, they're not thirty feet from the road. If, if, if that's the case, you may as well just shut that hole into town now, down, because nobody's gonna be able to build. And like I said, I mean, you know, I spent thousands of dollars getting, you know, uh, terms of conditions from, from conservation, uh, you know, that, you know, uh, the only setback, I'm looking for a, a small areas on the back of the house, my septic system design is, was, uh, was approved, I went through, believe me, meetings and meetings and meetings on conservation that are, that, that were approved, I'm looking for a small setback in the, on the, on the back of this house, has nothing to do with the septic system, that, that you keep bringing up.
He doesn't, you don't have the two yard, you don't have the two-acre lot, that's one variance. You don't have the ten, you don't have the thirty, or you want a variance for the back.
Right, right, but we... Right.
Technically, you need both?
Not that I knew, I, because I have, I think I have the frontage, because I've got like four hundred...
Frontage, you got a hundred and fifty feet, it's a two-acre minimum lot.
Yeah, whatever. But, uh, I, it was never ever brought up that I would need it, because I think everything that was down there was grandfathered, you know, for, for lots.
When did you, when did you purchase lots thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty?
Two thousand five.
I thought, I might ask a question, did you ever get, um, um, a letter from the building commissioner about, about getting a variance? Usually you get denied from the building commissioner.
No, the only, no, when I brought, when I went over to the, uh, yeah, when I went over...
Because the building commissioner is the zoning board enforcer.
Right, when I went over to get my building permit, and I showed, uh, showed him the plans, that's what, that, he says, well, you know, that, that calls for a variance in the back.
Because what I'm saying is, he'd also know, unless we should know too, or maybe we have to look it up, if it is grandfathered in as a building lot at all.
Yeah.
And then, because, do we need a variance for two acres, or is it grandfathered in as a lot?
The building inspector's denial letter to you.
He did have one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The proposed rear setback on your building plan shows a ten-foot rear setback, regretfully, I must inform you that the minimum required under the zoning bylaws is thirty feet.
Right.
Therefore, you would need to apply for variance from the zoning board of appeals.
Right.
The zoning board will make a determination whether relief can be granted. There, there's nothing here on the lot size.
Yeah, right, no, and it was...
So, I assume that, that it would be grandfathered, if...
Right.
We're in a two-acre, we're in a two-acre zone.
Right.
If you bought them, if, if you have an acre, and you bought them in oh-five, then they would be grandfathered, it's only went in like two thousand seven.
Yeah, well, I had that long before two thousand seven. Yeah, well, I had that long before two thousand seven.
And as well.
And then we combined the lots.
If you don't, if you didn't own any continuous land as well.
Right, right, no.
Then, that, that would make a difference.
Right.
But if you, if you own no other continuous land, you own, your house is down there, where, where does your house sit?
My house is across the street on, uh, lot seven? Uh, five and six.
So, Shore Drive separates the two lots.
Yeah, yeah, so I have nothing continuous on.
So, this land is across the street from your, your existing home?
Yeah, yeah.
Your existing home has nothing over, no parking, no, you're not using those lots across the street for anything currently?
No. No.
What's your house at, right on lot seven or six?
No, we are on five and six.
Five and six.
And then I've got a, uh, garage, we built, uh, in two thousand fourteen, on lot seven. That, again, I needed a variance for, and had absolutely no trouble, yeah.
That was our side setback, or?
Hi, man?
That was fr- side setback, front setback?
Uh, rear.
That was rear setback as well?
Yeah.
So, it's.
Like I said, you can't, you guys.
So, you build it pretty close to the lawn?
Yeah, yeah, you, you can't, uh, you can't build down there unless, unless you guys, you know, uh, unless we get a variance, it's just, lots are useless. And beautiful spot to build down there.
Yeah.
Yeah?
But there's like a yellow house there, just before that land, I think there was one.
Yeah, AJ, AJ, when it emptied, yeah, yeah, been emptied about five years now.
AJ, yeah, yeah.
So, right now, we're, we're just addressing, this was advertised, this meeting was advertised only for rear setback.
Yeah.
We're not gonna address size of the lot at all.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so if, if the building inspector determines that you need a variance for a lot size.
Yeah. Yeah, that, and believe me, believe me, for everything that I went through, all the meetings I went through, there was, it was never, it was never brought up on, as far as, uh. You know, as far as the, you know.
Lot size.
The, the, the size of the lot.
So, if he's, uh, if it's only a ten-foot setback, it really doesn't matter if he comes in with the foundation size, as far as he's got the sides and the front. You know what I'm saying, so it doesn't matter if it's okay forty foot, now we want a fifty foot, but he's still got the side setbacks and the front setbacks, he's, he's all right, you're just looking for the ten then.
Yeah, the only.
Right. Well, I, I'd like to know, you know, what size home he's on, what size home he's planning on building, and, and, you know, what the heave height's gonna be, and.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, I'll bring that over to, uh, to Northland Engineering, and I will have them, uh, inspect it.
Yeah.
I know, Brian, and bring that back.
You know, you can't give us, uh, we, we, we could give you a decision tonight, maybe, if, if we had that information.
Yeah, yeah, well, I can get that for you, like you said, probably within, you know, I don't know when the next meeting is, but.
We're gonna continue this, and sure, yeah.
But we have to continue this meeting.
Yeah.
But the elevation of the house too.
Yeah, elevation, the.
Do you have a kind of bad sign?
The whole, the whole's commandant, Brian.
Yeah.
Huh?
Yeah, you know, what, I was gonna be late, lay it out.
The height of the peaks, that's what I mean.
Roofline.
Brian, wanna write the back of this?
I, I'll just get mine.
And, and I'd like to know what that, what that little ox, octagon.
Is in the back?
Is in the back.
Yeah.
Where the well is, because we're not sure, I, not that we need to know.
Yeah.
She's got it, Mark, I just can't find it on that well. Anything else, guys, you think of?
And is this, is this, this is building over to the left here, right, that's a, that's a bump out on the. You got a roofline here, roofline there, roofline there, roofline there, roofline there, and then you got a bump out over here that's fifteen feet away, I don't know.
I don't fix that, yeah.
Says fifteen from wetlands, I think.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know what that. Because it looks, you know, if you took the, if you took this front of, the front of the house, you got a bump out in the front, you know, could you, could you crowd your whole house, instead of having that bump out, crowd the whole house forward, and you'd only need a five-foot variance, you know?
But, but, but even with the. Yeah. Yeah, and I'll ask you, if, yeah, if the house can be, if the house can be moved forward.
Can be moved forward, or, you know, just shrink it down a little bit, make it a little more conformal, get.
Yeah. Yeah.
And what, you know, what your reasons are for needing, you need, you need hardship to, to get a variance. And, um, you know, hardship isn't, well, I want a forty-foot living room, you know?
No, I mean, and, and we, and, you know, and we knew, we, we knew that, that, we were, we, we couldn't put a big, big house in here, I mean, we knew that, and that's not what I'm, I'm not coming here saying, hey, I, I wanna build a mansion here, it's basically gonna be a small, two-bedroom cottage, that's gonna sit, you know, sit out the back, and, like I said, it's gonna be a, you know, we're not trying to build anything big in there, you know?
That's, that's not a hardship, for sure.
So, it's, and, and we, and we knew that, we knew we're very limited with, what we can do, we're not, you know, I'm not coming here trying to.
Yeah, it just, it doesn't, doesn't show any.
Extend, yeah. No, 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 I understand that, yeah.
Twenty feet already, you know, you don't wanna make it any smaller than twenty feet, you know, then, then you got a shed, we don't want sheds in town, so, so, you know, instead of building a twenty-foot house wide, you build a twenty-four-foot wide house that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. 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 Yeah.
Worth giving a variant for, you know, rear setback, and, and you get a nice-sized house there, you, you have a better piece of real estate, it's better for the town, and, but, we, we just don't have, you know.
Right. Right. Right, yeah. No, 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 I understand, and that's, and that's, like I said.
A hundred by a hundred brick and eighty-foot-high house there, I, you know, I, I can't tell, I can't tell with this plan.
Yeah, that, that's fine, you know, and I just, you know, and like I said, I, I don't do this every day, so I'm just, you know, I'm coming in, just throwing this, you know, bringing this to you, I wasn't sure what I was gonna need, now I know, and, uh, we'll, I'll get everything together for you.
Just get the plot plan, and where you're gonna lay it out, and all the dimensions, and, so, I think we're gonna.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, trying to shrink it down enough that, if, you know, I would feel better with a fifty-foot variance instead of a twenty-foot, you know, or even ten, you know, it's smaller if you make it.
Yeah. Right. Yeah. Yeah.
You know, shows you trying, you know.
Yeah, oh, definitely, without a doubt.
Yes.
All right, I guess, um, if we wanna.
Continue.
Continue.
Make a motion to continue the meeting to.
Can we pick a date, what's a date?
More information?
What's a good date, wanna discuss a date?
Yeah, Jim, throw it out, just tell us when.
Gotta have a look at the calendar. How long, how long would it take you to?
A couple of weeks, maybe, I mean, if you don't.
You know, you better take as much time as you need, so you got it all.
Yeah, yeah, um.
They might be busy too, you know?